Those are discussions.
Yeah.
Those are discussions.
Oh, these discussions.
I know you didn't make the, uh, that what you said, we couldn't regulate the activities, some of the activities. But.
So it's fine on the table.
Can you impose a requirement to have a certain amount of insurance in the United States?
Well, insurance is where that's great, is where, is that going to play in? Is this something else? Zoning regulations land use, activities on property. Now, zoning ordinance is covering a lot of other topics, but as soon as you start straying outside of the activity, for instance, let's take you an example. There were ordinances that would allow, just public regulation, or if it was under public energy, but not private regulation. And that was thrown out because, proof the other is, whether it's a nonprofit, straight for profit, doesn't really impact what's going on in the property. What's going on in the property is with the zoning regulations. So, perhaps.
I didn't hear one word.
Did you go?
Yeah. But that's a, that's a health and safety issue, that's a second part of the question. Not so.
Be an extra, a good shot, or is that a typical?
Well, it's certainly.
Like the explosion.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
Totally louder than your last word.
Well, yeah. Boom with it, you know, but it was just like.
Yeah.
But like maybe ten.
Yeah.
Right.
The votes were streaming live tonight on YouTube, so everything will be recorded and available for the township. My son's over here and got us up and rolling. Be great for our transparency and everything else, so can't make the meetings, et cetera. It's another alternative.
What were you saying?
No. I'd thank my son for his assistance, my son called Joey Maiter and Keystone Consultants. It will help, there was no cost to the township, I paid for it at this point, and we'll see how things rest. You got a question, Mr. Steve?
No. I'm just, I gotta tear up like.
You're not, you're working.
You've got one minute.
You're not getting.
We're clocking down.
You're not getting my story.
I'm looking at six fifty-nine. So I got it. And this is six, it'll change when you're taking, right?
Yeah, maybe.
Let's check. Uh, mine's all changed.
Yep.
Robson Township regular meeting for June twenty-fourth, with first week of May, the latest on the side of the ball, Walter.
The United States of America, and we are about to do this, why nation, my God, and the world, we're gonna do this, so.
Thank you. Mark Rich. Mr. Chairman, uh, roll call will now take place, Chairman Smith.
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Brown.
Yep.
Supervisor Bittler.
Yes.
Supervisor Rhodes.
Here.
Supervisor Steve.
Here.
May please the board, Robinson Township Board Supervisors, is now due in session.
Recording in progress.
Are any citizens concerned? Name and address, please.
Peter Masler, two ninety-three, Whispering Pines Lane, Berksborough, one nine five oh eight. And my concern is, I've been trying to, uh, get various zoning issues resolved for more than a year now. I had had communications with two, uh, different township supervisors, less being in the hallway, and two zoning officials. I live in an R-two residential development, which I've had as my home for over thirty years. Over the recent years, I've had on both sides of my property, vehicles being brought in to be worked on. And now I have an excavating company that's set up shop directly across the street from me. The excavation company, uh, has three trucks, two different pieces of excavating equipment, large carrier for excavation, uh, to carry the equipment. There's also multiple wheelbarrows, attachments for trucks, uh, and/or snowplows. There's also a solar-powered storage tank on the property that seems to be leaking. The company works out of a thousand-square-foot-plus structure that is taller than the original home, and works also on outdoor spaces on the property to service their vehicles and equipment, and to burn their materials. And I also seen their use in the property inside their house. So my dilemma is that I live in a development that was proved as residential agricultural and zoned R-two, but my property is now surrounded on three sides by both an excavation company and people bringing in vehicles to work, uh, to work on. So, under R-two zoning, there is a limited allowance for so-called home occupation businesses. I have consulted with an experienced zoning attorney, and he told me this type of excavation business has nothing to do with home occupation. And reading on my own, the Robinson Township, uh, zoning ordinance, section eight oh eight, this is certainly confirmed. So the question is, how this business is operating in an R-two residential development, where it's clearly not allowed? And how is this business obtaining permits for Robinson Township when it is clearly not allowed? So I'm asking you supervisors to instruct your zoning people to have them review R-two zoning laws and implement a remedy to correct the violations around my property in accordance with appropriate law.
Chairman Rich, he said you were one of the last people he talked to, so what's, what have you done? I did talk with Mr. Masler, and I reviewed this with the township code enforcement officer, who advised me that the, there was no violation at this time. He went out twice to look at the property. I think Mr. Masler is correct that there are a certain amount of vehicles there. Under the zoning ordinance, as I recall, there was a new building structure constructed, and within that building, five hundred square feet is allowed to be used for a home occupational business. And the zoning officer told me that that was the limit that was being used in that building, and he saw no notice for a violation issue. What about the other two properties? Pardon? What about the other properties? You said there's three. I, I don't know anything about the other two properties. I mean, Mr. Masler told me he's been having a long-term dispute with his neighbors for a number of years. I have not familiar with the second two properties. I only, I only dealt with Mr. Masler relative to the, um, ex- ex- excavation. I also, you said, probably think that zoning officers should look at the other two and see if there's a violation. If the board wishes, I could instruct, um, the, the CEO to look at, to, to again, look at the excavation quote arrangement, and Mr. Masler gives me the addresses for the other two, um, I can instruct the CEO to go out there as well.
Was the complaint filed?
Yes.
Did the complaint include all the information that he needed?
The, the complaint, I believe, only dealt with the excavation business that you filed.
That's, that's correct, and, um, I also did, uh, put in a complaint about the other two properties. Somebody from zoning did come and, uh, take pictures. I had documentation of violations, he was not interested much in my documentation. He said he would get back to me, even if it.
How long ago was that?
At least a month, probably more.
I, I believe, Mr. Chairman, that the prior code enforcement officer had also looked at the other two properties. And not our current. But not our current.
So I, I, I feel like we have a current guy go out there, take a look and see what he sees. And to me, in my day, I think, God, I believe, an excavating business was pretty, just not sound like a good fit for the neighborhood.
Very well, so, so, there's, there's been a change in our code enforcement officer, so probably potentially the old code enforcement officer will look at this before. So we'll have the new group come out and look at the three properties.
I appreciate that, and, uh, but I, I wish somebody would review the law, because it seems like the law clearly states that such a business is not allowed on even close, and I verified that, it's, I'll be, my attorney is very experienced in law. Just took him about fifteen seconds to tell me that's not bad.
And might help if you could list the bullet points that you presented here this evening, and give a copy, if we can give a copy to the inspector, he can address each point that you're making.
Yes, I, I will do that, and, uh, they, these bullet points, as you said, have already been given to the township numerous times. I don't, I don't know.
Okay, I didn't see them, so I had a lot of.
No, I, I don't know what happened to that, but I'm just saying that the township has been aware of this.
Okay, well, the new code people would go out.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
Mr. Masler, may I have your address?
Two ninety-three.
Two ninety-three.
Whispering Pines Lane.
A quick telephone number.
Six one zero, five eight two.
Okay.
Two four nine five.
Two four nine five?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other suggestions there? All right, if not, correspondence, Rich. May please the board, just one other, one new one since the last workshop, and that is a, a crime alert from Berks County. Two things did come in since the packets were prepared and sent out. One was that, uh, DEP has declared a statewide drought watch. I sent that notice out to the supervisors. I believe it's posted on the township website, and there are copies, um, of it over there. But basically, what it pertains to is that the Commonwealth Drought Task Force, this, this week, June fifteenth, has declared a statewide drought watch. While not required, residents and businesses are encouraged to voluntarily conserve water by reducing their nonessential water use. Another item, very quickly, may please the board, I, I came across a notice, um, that was published on June fifteenth. There is a, uh, army base down in Louisiana named Fort, Fort Coke. And this past week, it was renamed Fort Henry Johnson. What about, I suppose, very interesting that the movie about Henry Johnson was just filmed in Robinson Township. And now a very distinguished military base has been renamed in its honor. And that's all the correspondence I have this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. All right, and, please, we're gonna guess.
Um, the chief wanted me here to see if you guys had any questions about anything, he didn't really give me anything to go over. But, uh, I can say that Officer Schlotman participated in the Painted Town Purple on Saturday. He was there with our new bike that we had donated by, heard from our authority. So, everything came back good, and everybody seemed to be having a great time.
No incidences?
No incidents or any issues or problems at all.
Traffic.
Any accessories he figures he needs for the bike that weren't included?
I have not talked to him about that yet. We don't see each other that often, but, uh, I'll make sure I get with the, see if there's anything.
What's your water barrel carriers or something?
I believe it, it can outfit up everything, and I believe that they're outfitting the old parts and everything.
So who's the main bike officer?
Justin's gonna be the main bike officer. At the right time, we're trying to get more, it's a bit tiring. We had a couple of people that are interested in it, we just have to take that person.
Would you basically go like this that way?
What's that?
Would you mostly go that way on the trail?
So they're gonna, so they spoke with Coonville Township and Exeter Township, and they're kinda gonna do like merger-type thing that, one day that all three departments drive trails, do everyone's township, just to check and make sure. And I believe we'll be utilizing it, go back on the water, for, during this time of the year, summer and fall, check the ball. Hundreds of people that go back there on the other days, sort all the trails and all the roads to the punk house.
We have a bike ride.
Uh, I guess.
Anything else to add today?
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Townsfolk was to me, you're so much, because it's. It was good then.
Yep.
All right, Rich, why then? Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, from your packet, you have the bills for approval. This listing was the same listing that was presented at the last workshop, there's no changes. The total of the bills, uh, under the general account of one hundred and two thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars, understood, fifteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-three, park, one thousand, one hundred and forty-five. I have the bills and the checks here, in case anyone would like to see them. Otherwise, um, Mr. Chairman, they're there for your approval. Anyone like to make a motion to approve the monthly expenses, trade-in report, and super agent?
I have a question here. On line item two thirty-one oh oh one, it says due to employees a negative number. We collect the money back to all of the employees or something, or what's going on there?
I'm sorry, Harold, I don't see, on the bills for approval?
No, on the balance sheet.
Oh. I, I didn't get to that yet. That's under the treasures report, okay? But I can address it, uh, what, what, something under the balance sheet?
It's, uh, two thirty-one, one oh oh one.
It says due to employees eight hundred and. Yeah. I didn't know the answer to that. I believe what this, what this dealt with was a, um, and I may be incorrect, it was, it could have been related to a former police officer.
I was gonna say, did that go back to Brad, because we were trying to figure out, we already saw that.
Yeah, we, that, that was, that was captured somewhere else, I think, I don't know, but I remember that for sure.
Let's see, we were, we were receiving small checks from the federal government for overpayment. And I believe that's what that two thirty-one point zero zero one, uh, expense showed.
There wasn't overpayment.
And it wasn't liability, but now it's no longer liability. Can you just find that out and maybe just email us with some? Sure, I will do that. Anyone like to make a motion to at least prove the monthly expenses?
I'll make that. I'll second.
Roll call, Mr. Steve?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Bittler?
I'm not sure I heard you, but, Mr. Steve? It was a no. I, I think it's the form that we're paying for that audit that we, in the piece of coverage. I think that the auditor should be embarrassed of the fact that they actually sent something out to look like that.
I'll go with yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
No, no. Mr. Chairman, uh, the next is the treasures report, and I will determine exactly what that negative expense was, and report via email tomorrow. In addition to the balance sheet, you see the profit and loss for the month of May of eight hundred, income of eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and two dollars. And also included, with the treasures report, are the balance sheets for the various accounts that the township has under its control, including SRO accounts and the, um, the state account. In conjunction with the state account, there was a audit performed, as it is annually by the Liquid Fuels Division of Penn Dot. It took about five hours today, um, reviewing various documents and expenditures. And the clean audit was pretty similar, I was pleased about that. But I expect, as well. Anyone like to make a motion to approve it?
I have another question, the treasure report. Uh, line item one thirty-one zero one five, it's due from third party, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars, seventy cents.
I'm sorry, what sheet is that, or number?
It's one thirty-one, oh oh one, uh, oh one five.
First page, other current, under other current assets, first page of the balance sheet.
First page?
Other current assets, there's a second one on there.
Those would be, excuse me, those would be listed as an asset for monies that are due either from a developer or some other project that's currently underway in the township. So it's listed as an asset to be received.
But we don't have it.
We do not have it, but it's a quote on the books. Anyone want to make a motion to approve each other?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Roll call, Mr. Steve?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
No, no. Thank you, may please the board, uh, relative to the aging sewer report, uh, that was reviewed last month, or happened in March, two changes, removing accounts that were, uh, declared uncollectible. And, um, we are proceeding, uh, on a, on a monthly basis, reviewing the totals of delinquencies of all of these accounts. And for any account that is in excess of five hundred dollars, as well as three months in arrears, a thirty-day letter will be issued. If payment is not made in full at that time, the solicitor is instructed automatically to file a leave.
Which forms have been eliminated? Was this looked, was, was looked exactly like I told you that before?
Yeah, the, the, the first one was, was taken off, uh, the six forty-seven. Because I saw it on a report at the, I'm pretty sure at the, um, Robinson Municipal Authority, that one was taken off. But I can check on that.
Yes, I mean.
Were you mentioning two at the authority meeting, two different accounts? Remember?
Yeah, that, that's like this guy. Uh, this one here was, uh, sold at Sheriff's, they have free and clear, but there is money due since it was sold. So that, there should be a number there, but that's not the right number.
All right.
And first one, first one. And then, uh.
That, that would be a new number for the new owner.
Right. And hopefully we're building it.
Okay.
And then, I thought I saw a couple in here again, twice. One is a delinquent, and one is a corrupt, but I don't, don't know whether the.
Would it be under inactive?
Well, one is under the inactive, but there's another one here, and I don't know whether it's the, the same property or the one that was sold, yeah.
Well, if you wanna give me a call, I'm at tomorrow, I can, I can check on that.
Okay.
And that completes, uh, the review of the aging sewer. Uh, do we want to have a make a motion to approve the sewer aging report?
I'll be, your motion will be accepted.
I'll second, roll call, Mr. Steve?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
No, no. And that, that completes the finance review, Mr. Chairman. All right, Tom, it's chief.
I have a little big ticket item for tonight, just wanted to take you back that we assisted PD with the Painted Town Purple event on, uh, Saturday morning. Heard some good stuff from the community, that everybody was there, uh, worked with Officer Schlotman a little bit. A lot of good comments that, uh, all parties were involved, if anything, happened, but fortunately it was a com event. Other than that, I think that's all we have. Supervisor Brown, did you get your answers on the insurance questions today? Your answers on the insurance questions about our vehicles? You didn't?
I had asked a question about your vehicle or a chief's vehicle.
Okay.
Not being at the fire company or not being at your residence, I was, I was curious whether there was any, any issues with the vehicle, which vehicles are in service or not.
It's in the parking lot.
Was that out of service at any time?
Not at any moment. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out.
Absolutely, I'm hoping that the reports.
I don't need to hear it from our insurance agent that we're going end around, so, thank you.
I don't, I don't believe there is an end around on this board. I, I believe this board should ask and get on top of all of the insurances, that's what I believe. Last month, with our last meeting, when you weren't here, I, I raised a concern that I was gladly able to sign a check with our company for their insurance, but I, I had some concerns, not knowing which vehicles were where, and I'd like to see which vehicles are insured, how they're insured.
I can provide you with a copy of all our insured, our max policies.
It's not, it's not, it's not an end run, we pay for those insurances.
It's your opinion.
Right, it's my opinion.
It is.
All right, it's not an end run, I don't understand why there's not more transparency with respect to the fire companies, why the reports are late.
Ours are not late.
Well, you know.
Sorry, it says six five.
We, uh.
Six five, two fifty.
We will, uh, we'll get more and more involved with.
Is this part of targeting against me that you've been doing?
I had, I had a question, I had a question, I had a question before, and I asked our, our manager. We're getting reports that people are resigning, they're not resigning, we're contacting the solicitor, I can't get answers to what we're doing.
It's not involving us?
Excuse me?
It's not involving our department? One time?
Our manager tells us that he got a call from Supervisor Rhodes on you, and he had a discussion with you about the owner's ability to perform.
Questioned, if I heard.
Well, can you, can you not that discussion?
I told him I did not hear.
I don't understand.
I don't think you do. Just want to clarify, you've been targeting me, don't let me talk, and our department, since the moment I put my name into run for supervisor. I'm not gonna go down that rabbit hole right now with you, but it's been happening, I hear about all of it every single time. I don't appreciate it.
Are you entrusting me?
Oh, I am.
Could you say that again? I'm clear?
All right, I'm just.
I'm done, you heard it.
We're gonna go to.
I asked him to repeat it, so we're clear. Recorded on YouTube.
All right, thank you, and go. Rich, the minutes? May I please the board, there are a couple of minutes, two, three sets of minutes to be approved. The first is the workshop of May eleventh, there was a revision to May, I'm sorry, April thirteenth, April eighteenth, regular reading. And also included in your package is the minutes, or are the minutes, from the May seventeenth, uh, board of supervisors, regular meeting, four-year review and approval. Are they correct, and are you satisfied?
The May seventeenth, I'm on page two of nine. I, I don't have any recollection with respect to architectural noise, June fourth and seventh, when they were driving. I think we're getting a few things. I think we're getting a few things mixed up, so I just would delete that. Going forward, I think one of the functions of the live stream is going to be a little easier, perhaps minute management. Those are available and will be available to the public. Certainly, I look forward to Richard taking a look at those. I think that's going to help clarify something that we've, in my opinion, struggled with. Recording's not going to. I have a couple of questions in regards to the minutes as well, they're kind of like following questions though. Berksen Virotech, did we go back and visit with them and find out what the answer was from them to update our records?
I'm sorry, Berksen Virotech?
Yeah, did we contact them to gather information as to how we can get those records and what the discount is, or, you know, last night I heard it was a thousand bucks, so did we ever resolve that?
I called Mr. Bittler today and confirmed the one thousand dollar payment, and to make arrangements to pick the files up.
Okay. We usually get emails, everything and everything else, but I did not see an email on our support of not approving House Bill two ninety-nine.
But it, two days after the meeting, I was, that was approved by the House. I didn't get a chance to get it though.
Sorry, you may remember not knowing the question, but did the grant for the bullproof vest get approved?
Uh, not even, no, no. I believe that takes a little bit of time for the chief gets to implement it or the action to prove it.
Okay, and then, did we ever purchase the diamond nets?
Not yet, no.
It's actually going on for months. I mean, it's a pretty simple purchase. You, you have a note in here about the burning ban. It says that I suggest that township managers should implement the burning ban after consulting with the board. That would be for the new ward nets.
For what?
For a new, a new ward net, that's the way it should be verbalized, a new ward net.
What month is that, like, the first?
It's May eleventh.
What page, Harold?
Fourth.
Supervisor Stevens suggested that the township manager should implement any burning ban after consulting with the board.
Yeah, that would be something for the new ward nets.
For the new ward?
Yeah.
To add to it.
Right.
Yes. Add that to the new ward net, Sergeant.
Yeah, we can't change what's already there.
Okay.
The other thing is, did we get signed up on the running parts?
No.
Did we get the letter written to New Morgan, about New Morgan, to the DEP and EPA and the Contour Basin District in regards to the one-up order from the proposed workhouses?
Yes.
Did we get a copy of that, Richard?
If you did, if you did not, I will see that again. Did you get a copy of that, Mr. Stevens?
I didn't, I didn't get a copy of it, I wouldn't be asking the question. Page two, the middle of the paragraph, the middle of the, the second paragraph there, it says Supervisor Stevens asked the.
I'm sorry, what am I?
Uh, we're eighteen, eight, what are you keeping?
Hold on one second. Go ahead.
Hey, you get down to.
I'm sorry, what page?
Two.
Mm-hmm.
Second paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
It, it goes down to three quarters of the way through the paragraph, it says Supervisor Stevens asked how the county put a twenty-eight hour delay on the county ban, it is required to. Their quote, and their ban is, quote, so long that they're required to do that. So it's such a something arbitrary.
I will delete that.
And then, C.S. Dorber did some work at the park.
I picked it one.
C.S. Dorber did some work at the park.
Uh, sir, what, what page, Harold?
That's page four. It was a monthly extent from the, from the treasury report. Talks about C.S. Dorber, an invoice.
Yes.
All right, did they, did they complete that work?
Yes.
It was satisfactory?
Satisfactory.
Because if you heard last.
The water was tested.
As you heard last night, we have problems, they're not responding to our calls and, and taking care of phone work, they're dead.
No, they were very, very responsive. They had to come out twice because there was first a, a misdiagnosis of the problem, and then ABD came back and replaced certain equipment, and you get a pocket sale.
Okay. Uh, on page eight, item eight, it should be Rock Hollow Woods, I'm not familiar with the Rock Hollow Run.
Okay.
And then.
Is it plural, woods or wood? I never knew if it was plural or not.
Woods.
It's woods.
Plural.
Sure.
Yeah, they have one of the two phrases. And then, on that same page, legal matters, the ABD agreement, was that ever executed?
No.
I have no idea, it's been with you for two months. But it was never executed.
No.
At my understanding, he sold the property.
I don't know.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes and reports in our possession, but of course, the minutes with the corrections recommended.
I'll, I'll make that motion that we approve the revised minute.
What about the reports? Do you do that same?
Uh, the reports, we have it all presented.
I'll say it again, hold on, Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
I will vote yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
No.
And no, no, yes.
You're not voting, you're voting no, Mr. Rose?
I'm voting no for the minutes. Day eleven, I was not here because of a personal issue, and I do not agree with things that happened, and things that were missed, so I'm voting.
There, there is a downside to all this, because you've got to take the package.
Right.
Fighting is here.
All the meetings with which you're not here, an abstention would seem more in order than no vote.
Well, I read the minutes, still unpromoted what happened.
And you want to discuss what happened? Are we able to discuss that on the record?
No, in due time, we will.
Engineering.
We have a timeframe with which we want to discuss.
I'll, I'll confirm what it is.
All right. All right, we'll move on to engineering.
Good evening, Board. Under my agenda items, I have two time extensions, the first of which is for Sierra Hill Estates, that is yet another ninety-day time extension. I made provided stuff. Their request in written form was in, in my report on the township's header.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion, will you accept the time extension on Sierra Hills Estates? I'll second.
Hold on, Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
The second one is for Pro Grade Supplies, this was the small warehouse on seven twenty-four near the Dersborough Line, they too requested a time extension.
I'll make a motion that we approve the time extension for Pro Grade Supplies. I'll say it.
Hold on, Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
No, no, yes.
Item C, Hyphen Camp, I believe the board acted on at the workshop meeting, so no action there. D, Rock Hollow Woods Project Discussion, there were representatives here at the workshop to discuss their current plans, and the direction from that meeting was to have them discuss their filing of an amended planning record with their surveyor, which they have done. I received an email from their surveyor, Mr. John Hopper, with respect to timeframe. He believes he can begin the surveying in August, repair a revised land development submission for planning commission submission by late December, and sees no reason why he couldn't conclude that application process by the end of the year.
We've seen copies, the board's seen copies of that email?
No, they have not, it's right here in the place.
Well, come on, inclined to vote in favor of stuff that I see just up in the interview. When did we get this? I'm, I'm moving.
You weren't, you weren't asking for a vote tonight, or you just, this is more information?
Well, at this point, we are looking to extend their timeframe, the current timeframe associated with their letter of credit expires July thirteenth.
Mr. Orlando, just for my reference, when someone has a plan and they don't comply with the, or don't follow with it, how, how, how do we enforce a plan? Obviously, there were things that were supposed to be done that weren't. And when I asked a question why, the only answer I got was, perhaps financial, I never really got an answer. So my question to you, Mr. Orlando, is what, what mechanism does the township have? Why aren't these things being completed?
Well, I can't answer that enough by saying the township agreement with this developer. A generic.
What's typical?
The generic answer is the developer improvement agreement provides the rights and responsibilities between the parties in land development plans. I have no involvement in this one, so assuming that there is a developer improvement agreement, that would answer your question, Tim, whatever that agreement provides. I, I don't know if we have one or not. I assume we do.
We do, and that's, that's what we're discussing. Well, a, a mechanism of that is, is the financial security, which this agreement is that happened over twelve months, and that was the trigger to bring all this back.
Yeah, so. Well, hang on, one second, if that's the case, and further on Tim's point, you, the, the second thing you then have to look at, if we're going to, one of the main benefits of the financial security is the ability to draw on the financial security to cover the cost of defaults. There's nuances of that that I would only like to discuss with the board in executive session, because it involves litigation. But in public session, I can say that as a general proposition, in a typical developer improvement agreement that I have prepared in the past, drawn on the letter of credit, is usually provided for in the agreement and in the letter if improvements are not completed timely, there is a violation of the agreement terms, or the letter of credit is terminated by the lender. And actually, I'm going to talk, I'm going to seek direction from the board about letters of credit, but that's on my report, has nothing to do with this, with this development. So Harold, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I do, so I just want to make sure I have my head around this. So the only way that we can spend that improvements money, or the escrow money that we have, is to make the improvements that are required.
You don't spend escrow money, if you draw.
Well, draw on it.
If you default, then you're obligated to complete the improvements per the agreement.
But that's only improvements, not necessarily building structures that were never built?
Well, first of all, I can't imagine why a township would take financial security for structures or buildings, you only take financial security for public improvements.
So the only, what we're facing here.
But again, I don't know what the agreement says, so I can't be specific.
What we're, what we're down to here is, they have some improvements to make, they haven't done with stormwater parking lots.
I thought they were. These, these, the stormwater is complete.
Okay.
Um, the, the remaining items primarily are accessory to the building that they are now seeking not to build.
As I remember, the stormwater was one of the biggest items at the Miskin in improvements agreement.
Typically is.
Yeah, well, the reason last, last meeting was that since they were not going to do those things, they just wanted to get everything squared away, and then that's why they wanted to be extended.
Correct.
And then have Hopper fix the plans, taking away some of the stuff they're not doing, and they're losing their current right to construct the building.
And what I had suggested was that you want that plan, so that you record a revision to a final plan of record, so that the plan of record matches what we ended up actually doing.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounds like you're saying an as-built plan. Exactly. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but that's what it sounds like you're saying.
I mean, more or less. That was going to be okay.
Yeah, so, so really what we're facing here is an as-built plan. Whatever they thought.
Correct, and, and the timeframe was what.
And no, there's no real improvements to be done yet.
Yeah, and at the workshop, we agreed in principle to let Hopper do his thing and then give them time, so I think.
So, so each time we do each time. I, I guess, we can only get, did he give us a request in writing?
I do not have a request in writing.
Oh, one more.
Their, their original request was, and Reg and I have not received.
Doesn't our ordinance require a request in writing?
This is a trigger of the financial security, this is not a MPC time extension.
So I will go ahead and I'll go out on the limb, and I'll, I'll move to grant them a one-month extension, so they have time to get their letter and request an extension to whatever time period that they want to obligate themselves to have to sync up. I'll say it.
Hold on, Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
No, no, yes.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification, the one-month extension is for what?
That's for the letter of credit, as I understood it, to remain.
Letter of credit, and them to request an appropriate extension for the plan.
Come up with a nice date, and if they need to change it, they change it, come up with January tenth or something.
Exactly, they want to be covered forward, basically. But I, I don't want to pick a date for it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
They, they think they can, they can only do a windy day?
No, no, this is, this is a different.
Oh, September day, okay.
But this has to do with the letter. It must be renewed.
I think now they sell, I think that's what you're in a same direction.
Well, um, letters of credit is just a, simply whatever needs.
Okay.
This one apparently wasn't. Okay. Next item I have is the twenty twenty-three maintenance contract, we discussed this briefly at workshop, bids were received, one bidder, asphalt being a solution, provided prices, the base bid was for a longer section of White Bear Road, the alternate bid was for a shorter section of approximately two thousand feet from golf course to the top of White Bear, the hill that we've been having some issues, some concerns with. So at this point, I'm seeking direction from the board, if you'd like to move forward with either. Included within both bids is a double application of oil and chip on the section of Rock Hollow Road from Calico Bridge.
And, did you say a length of the base bid?
Two thou, uh, I don't have a length of the base bid, the base bid goes to Beaver Road.
Yeah, I know, it's pretty, it's a much longer distance.
It's a much longer distance.
Yeah, it's probably a little.
Well, what happens is when you shrink that.
Yeah.
Section of, of micro that much, your unit prices go down.
A lot of it's obviously spring in the machinery and.
Yeah, you're, you're paying for the mobiles.
Yeah, because it's difference to go that much further, I'd say it's definitely a lot more than two thousand feet from there to, to Beaver Road.
Yes.
An additional forty thousand, if you're paying a hundred and thirty-three, the first two thousand feet, you know, for a digital, it just doesn't make sense to take the shorter project.
So the. The difference is approximately six thousand square meters.
And, and money, what's that, what's that about fifty grand?
The seventy, you're not going to have the overall, you guys. Yeah, forty, that's right. Just looking at that micro number, you're at seventy-three, eight for the base, and forty-six point. Just looking at that micro number, you're at seventy-three eight for the base and forty-six twenty-one for the old.
We're laying cheaper, yeah, it's obviously.
Thirty-seven, two fifty-four.
Looks like we have enough money to go to Congress.
I think it's, we should do the alternate date.
But it.
Wait, do I have that right? B is the second column, correct?
The longer or shorter section of the.
The longer section.
So that's the base bid.
All right. So I, I think we should go with the.
Base bid?
Yes.
He said B?
Well, it's base bid, so there's a portion of base bid.
Oh, okay, okay.
Here, here, here's a list of it in the paperwork.
You're going to have to find an alternative way home if you're making a car.
All right, so is someone making a motion?
I'll make the motion that we do the.
The base bid?
Yes.
Base bid and the inclusion of oil and chip portion of Rock Hollow.
That's in motion, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's for a hundred and seventy-one thousand, thirty-five dollars, ten sixty.
That's correct. I will second that.
Josh, what's your thing?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Verder, Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Nobody, yes. Do they have a question?
What if we get this bid out in the beginning of the year? Would that not have paid for this? Because the prices are a whole lot more now than they were if you would have put the bid out in May. Is it not?
If my memory serves right, they put things in a contract that if the price of material goes up.
Yeah.
So, so does not cost.
You're paying, but, but there is.
You take it out.
Yeah, but I mean, if we did it in May, it would be a dollar or so cheaper than if we did it now.
There, there is an advantage in getting the bid out.
Probably, but then we're faced with school buses and.
Yeah, but it doesn't, you can put the bid out. Doesn't mean you have to do it.
Right, okay.
But we could get the bid done earlier, and that way we'd be able to get a little bit more road done possibly.
That's correct. Uh, next item that I have is Rock Hollow Road Bridge. As was discussed, the township has been directed by the bridge inspector to reduce the weight limit. The weight limit that has been recommended is thirteen tons, single axle, sixteen tons combination. We are currently exploring, uh, whether or not we need to seek any special permitting to continue to run the school buses across that bridge. But we see that direction, I'll push.
G D W on those school buses.
It's about that, because you need, well, you need to see the old front school bus, no matter what.
Yeah, but actually, I think with that bus, you only have one sort of blue format for just.
Yeah, so it's only, there's only one option.
Hold on, hold, bridge law. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the G D W is actually is.
Whatever he gets back to us for.
Yeah, it didn't work that way, as a matter of fact.
And we're also proceeding with, with, uh, putting R and P together for.
Okay, great, great. You've got a list of bidders?
We're, we're working on, yeah. We're going to recreate some of the same stuff we did with the primary.
I, so, you know, while we're talking about bridges, it looks like they replaced a bridge on five sixty-eight.
Yeah, I was going to bring up the same thing.
Yeah. And I believe it's Penn Dot has made a lot of PA one call markings, the one by golf course road and the White Bear Road. Now, on White Bear Road, I understand because they have to put signs that say detour or traffic to the left. I have no idea what you're doing on golf course road. And, uh, another thing that comes to mind is, uh, the little bridge there by, put this up on the stream there, by your place, by the nursery. Oh, sorry, okay, sorry, okay. We've always had problems whether or not the trucks actually they turn up weight there, and it's, I don't know if it's ever been posted properly.
It's, yeah, it was posted fifteen ton originally, and then our lending roadmaster decided it should only be five ton, peel the moral aside. Last time Gary looked at it, said it should be fifteen ton, but I don't know if it's posted properly. I don't know if the signs are posted properly.
What was the name of the river?
Oh, it's, uh, River Road.
Over Siam.
That was great. I, I, because I, I just know that all the traffic, it's a local, is going to go
Yep.
that way up the golf course road to get around the bridge. I mean, one doesn't need to be inspected.
Right, but let's, let's make sure it's posted properly if we're going to have.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I don't know whether we should, uh, try to keep some trucks out of there by posting up local traffic only signs or something. Because the last thing you want to do is have a truck, a tractor trailer, uh, stop on either Ridgeway Road or, or on golf course road. Neither one can handle the trucks.
Yeah. Ridgway is. That's, that's a trick.
All right, we'll double check that. Those are the only items that I really have for discussion tonight unless the board has questions. I do have one, one more, just real quick as an update. Working to set up a, uh, pre-construction meeting with Construction Master Services for the paving contract, that's Whispering Plains and the other section of Rock Hollow. Their paving schedule has been accelerated. They currently have us scheduled on the books for July twelfth. And we'll coordinate with the police department and the road crew as that changes.
We're going to be able to get the, the Lincoln batch in done before then? That we haven't started?
That's why we got to get together with them.
Excuse me, Brian, I'm here for the James Bell subdivision. What's?
So I just received those plans here tonight. I tried to respond to your email.
Okay, so you just got them?
Right. I have a letter penned for these guys saying they're good, but I'll be quite honest with you, I haven't looked at them stuff.
Okay.
Did you not receive an email?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
You mean?
Uh, Scott Miller with Spot Stevenson McCoy. We were seeking conditional final plan approval subject to his review letter. The plans are signed and sealed and, uh, ready to be basically, um, approved by the municipality, so.
But we can't do that in this, at least the workshop. Right, I, I, I tried to reach out to you. I don't know why I didn't get through on my cell phone. I, just like I said, they were here at my seat tonight.
Okay, so what's the next course of action then? When would they be up for?
So these will be on the agenda for the workshop meeting. If the board would be so willing, we could entertain action at that point.
Okay, and that date is?
Can't be asked a hard question.
That was a quiz.
Thirteen, is it thirteen?
Thirteen, thirteen?
Thirteen, thirteen.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Sorry, sir.
That's okay.
We, we didn't get the, the agreement back from the board?
I don't have an agreement back from them.
I just love it. Everybody's over in, and we'll get there. Nobody shuts up.
Yep, so I will, I will continue to follow up. Um, you know, my understanding is their contract are provided to them, and he was waiting for it to be signed, and it was going to get dropped off here and notarized to Rich, but we haven't received it yet.
And then you made the changes to the mini game chat, paperwork or the?
Yes, I do, I have a back-up game.
Okay, you, sorry, you, you can carry that. Yep, okay.
Any other questions?
That's all I have.
All right, I'm going to do so, Mr. Orlando.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, items on my agenda involve the draft of the short-term rental agreement, our ordinance that's been under discussion. Ryan and I have had, uh, several conversations. Each of us are reviewing the ordinance. The provisions of the, as you know, you've, you've pretty much looked at the short-term rental and that definition, which everyone seems to like. Your planning commission had a, I think, a pretty good and somewhat spirited discussion about which use districts you know, and ultimately, of course, that's up to this board, but, uh, the planning commission, I sent several members, had, had a couple of thoughts and had asked us to go through the ordinance and give them some ideas about performance standards if they wanted to recommend expanding beyond the two zoning districts that was in the draft that Harold presented. That was a discussion from the planning commission. The discussion on my end and, uh, with Ryan is the short-term rental definition by itself is fine, but since it overlaps with several other definitions from the ordinance, you can't just plug this in and ignore the rest of the ordinance. That's what is going to take the time to do this properly. Just to give you a couple of small illustrations. If you search, uh, the word boarding house in our ordinance, uh, it comes up twenty-two times. If you search the word transient, uh, it comes up, uh, seven times. Tourist or tourist home, uh, that comes up twenty-one times. If you just search the word bed as part of bed and breakfast, it's fifty-nine times. So that's all of those to illustrate to you that, um, because, as we originally said way back in March, that the concerns with the definitions of boarding home, tourist home, all of those things which potentially overlap with this short-term rental idea, they all need to be, uh, revised. And then we need to make sure that the references to them are still appropriate in the other multiple sections of the ordinance. Uh, I've been spent, I've spent some considerable time doing that already. I believe Ryan has also. But we're, in my view, not ready to give you a draft ordinance, uh, at least not one that would be competent. So I'm reluctant to promise you a date, but I, we are actively working on it. That's the reason why, uh, you don't have something for you to look at tonight. And if, sorry, with the board, I'd like to continue that process until the two of us are satisfied that it should come back to you. And that's acceptable to the board. The other thing I'd like to suggest, uh, is that even before it comes back to you, you might want the planning commission to continue to discuss it because I, some, the way I viewed it, and again, Harold was there, Rich was there. You guys chime in if you think I'm, but my perception from where the planning commission left off is they thought they were going to get it again.
Well, yeah, and so do we. Like tomorrow, but.
But I mean, as far as, with zoning ordinances, if you look at the MPC and the way that I think is in the best interest of the township, zoning ordinances, when they're recommended for approval, ought to come out of the planning commission. When it does, it shortens the timeframe for review by the planning commission. If it were originated by us or, uh, they, you know, by a, uh, an applicant that asked for a zoning change, the planning commission gets it for thirty days anyway. But when it's, when it's recommended by the planning commission, their thirty days is done, and the only thirty days is left is Burke County, Burke County Planning Commission. So ideally, once we get this draft, and of course, well, yeah, the board will be looking at whatever we do, but ideally, I'd like the ordinance that you approve for adoption to be coming as a recommendation from your planning commission.
Well, so, uh, the plan is to send it back, and that's what we told them to do, because they had some recommendations that they wanted included in it.
That's right.
So, but it's unfortunate that when they rejected the, the plan, or the plan was rejected, that should have triggered the planning commission to say, hey, maybe we need to make a change here and, and implement a change, but that didn't happen. So three months later, the supervisors have to do that. So I agree with you that the, the planning commission should be instituting those changes, but they have to take the vote by the horns when the problem comes up.
What plan are you referring to?
The last one, the bell plan. Yeah, the bell, the one that was just in here, the bell. So, I mean, somebody should trigger that and say to the planning commission, hey, maybe you guys want to take a look at this.
You can certainly provide that direction. Anything else on short-term rentals at this point? The other thing that I have, nothing specifically on the intended, but, uh, it's, it's apropos that the questions came up earlier about the developer improvement agreements and, uh, financial security because, the first one since I have been appointed is now, uh, has now been requested from my office, and I'm working on that for Scoop to Bill. We have a draft of the, um, developers improvement agreement. I'm using the form that, that I have used for many decades. But the, uh, the issue that has come up, and then I seek the direction from this board, it's always been my practice as a township solicitor in other municipalities, that when the financial security is in the form of a letter of credit, which I prefer, that the letter of credit, uh, there's a number of requirements that aren't really controversial that be evergreen, which means it automatically renews. It has to be, uh, it, it bonds the not only construction of the improvements, but also obligations under the developer improvement agreement, which is a nuance that only comes up, that you hope it never comes up, but it does come up once in a while. And, and again, those are not too controversial. Almost every lender that we communicate with, they, they add language we want. But the one that we're now facing with Scoop to Bill, and this always a broader, a broader issue. The other recommendation that I always make is that it be a letter of credit drawn on a bank where we can draw on it in Berks County or in a neighboring county. And the, uh, the developer in our Scoop to Bill project, uh, is utilizing PNC, and they don't have any branches in Berks County or frankly, anywhere nearby that I know of. And their letter of credit draft, which I just saw on, what's today, Tuesday, uh, yesterday, there, that letter of credit proposes that if we needed to draw on it, we got to go to Pittsburgh. This is becoming more and more of a problem as banks regionalize and as banks get bought up, and we have fewer and fewer banks. Even banks that we have here, because of the letters of credit, the nature of a letter of credit, it's a, you know, it's a, uh, it's a negotiable instrument. So the nature of them, not every bank teller is going to know, you know, to fork over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or some other large number. So they like to have them in, in specific departments, and, and that, we've seen that more increasingly as well. But the immediate issue for tonight is, uh, does the board want to follow what I would ordinarily recommend? And that, that is that the financial security be in such a form that it is able to be drawn on within Berks County. The Scoop to Bill owner has a relationship with PNC, that he wants to use PNC. We've seen a PNC letter of credit, and we have to go to Pittsburgh to draw on that, uh, if there were a default. Hopefully, there's never default, but it actually does happen. So I was seeking some direction from you as to how you'd make sense.
I, I don't, I don't think the guy's going to default. On the other hand, I think that we want to be able to draw on the local bank.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Or not the local bank, but the bank is, uh, has.
Try to make Scoop to Bill change there, is there?
Well, that's, that's, we, we would, when, when you have a development under the MPC, the land owner or developer has the right to post a bond with an insurance company. And when you post a bond, there's no insurance company that does business in Berks County, and posting a bond is almost always a lawsuit if there's, if there's a, a problem. And posting a bond is almost always a lawsuit if there's, if there's a, a problem. But, but the MPC allows a bond. So if a bond were proposed, we wouldn't have the drawing rights in that sense because it's a different form of security. Most developers and most contractors like to use letters of credit, and, and I like them too, because a letter of credit has an, as I said, it's immediately payable if there is a violation of the contract or the improvements need to be constructed. So a letter of credit is usually better and it's usually what's presented.
As long as you watch the expiration date.
Well, but that's the evergreen clause. We don't have to worry about that, Galen, because that's, that's part of the normal, but we don't accept it because there's not an evergreen clause. And the other thing is, we got to be out of the, whether there's a default or not, we got to have the right to draw on it if they terminate. So those are all standard stuff that are part of my requirements that is, is usually not an issue for the, for the issuer, the bank. This one, because PNC's not here, I need to know from you, do you want me to insist on that? Or do you want, in this particular case, to allow the developer to use PNC?
Did you say their closest branch is Pittsburgh?
I don't, no, I said that the letter of credit provides that it's drawn on the PNC main branch in Pittsburgh.
Oh, main branch in Pittsburgh?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's what.
That's what the letter of credit is providing, that's the draft that we saw.
I know PNC's in Montgomery County.
Right.
But if it's.
What was the emphasis, you wanted to do with Burke County?
I think we're just making it more difficult for the town.
What's that?
I think we're making it more difficult for them, right?
Well, I, I agree with that, but you know, then what about the next time I walk to the door?
Well, I'm only asking about Scoop to Bell.
Okay.
But, but it will be helpful to, to help policy.
We're going to trust Scoop to Bell.
Oh, I mean, the guy, the guy's been pretty straight front, hitting pretty up front all the way across.
I agree, he's been pretty upfront.
So who would drive to Pittsburgh?
I guess I'll, I'll.
I'd say it would probably be your township manager.
The last, remember?
We'll catch a Penguins game out there.
The last time I took a coaster for riding road, road home in a trunk.
Well, would you like a motion or what would you?
No, I just want direction.
I think we're fine.
Are we just, are we saying all this, we're saying just for them?
I don't want, I don't want a motion because I don't want to lock in for other people. I just want to know what we're doing with this one.
Just since they've been, you know, I think it'd be okay.
Probably.
All right, so then I, I will, I will make the other changes to this draft that I have.
Let me ask you a thing, did we need to amend any of our ordinances to change that, that we're requiring that the, the bank be, you know?
No, we have, whenever, here's, here's what you need to do, to answer that question. When you make the motion to approve any plan, you need to make the motion, say, conditioned on a developer improvement agreement and financial security satisfactory to the township. Your motion then?
Make sure you remind us of that every time.
I, I will do my best. All right, and unless the board has any other questions, that's my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Public works, Rich? Mr. Chairman, before we get to public works, we, we did receive post, preparation, post appropriation of the, back here, correspondence from the attorney who was representing, I forget the last name, concerning the storage magazine facility.
Proberator.
Proberator. I didn't know if the board wanted to acknowledge that or?
Well, I can tell you, I already don't like that ordinance that they proposed.
Well, what you, what the board would should do is give it to the solicitor and then either give it to the planning commission or to the supervisor. I'm just bringing it to your attention.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably a good idea, send it to the planning commission at their opinion and then we can talk about it at the workshop.
Yeah, present the meeting on the 7th, 3rd, the meeting on the 3rd. Yeah, so put it on their agenda.
Did I send that to you, Gee?
I did, but I didn't want to review it without the board's, the board's.
So it'll be on the agenda for the planning commission meeting?
And then for us.
That's what you made.
Okay. All right. Relative to public works, I've been in communication with Exeter Township. They have provided us an invoice, a written invoice confirming the purchase of the front-end motor. I've been in touch with Fulton Bank who are making arrangements now to get the lease purchase financing agreement prepared. And I hope to have that to the board through your next meeting. The power washer's been received, has been used quite frequently so far. I'm very impressed and thank the board for that. Relative to the self, to the Heidelberg dump truck, I'm still having discussions with our road crew and South Heidelberg as to what to do.
Does that mean you almost put Hindenburg, does that mean that's like an omen then?
Yeah, that's probably it.
I will not.
I'm just saying.
It's like a derangible.
Name it after somebody, say, you can do this.
And our counteract is 237 Bard Road. Comment about the truck, there was just another International 7400 on it. Municipal bid that went off big, they couldn't get to reserve it 20 grand. It did not sell.
I saw that.
So, you know what I mean? And all you see out there for sale is store 7400s. What's that tell you? Why ain't you seeing the other trucks?
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Rich?
I have received so far two bids, approved proposals for the administrative office carpet cleaning. I'm waiting for one more and I'll bring it back to the board. And that's all I have under public works. And Mr. Chairman, nothing new under the Parker and Rec items that were discussed at the workshop meeting.
I would not own this.
I, I take your question. Do you, do you think you're going to get a better price than you already got on the carpet clean?
I'm trying to get three.
And because one guy obviously knows what he's doing and puts clean one of the spots up. I don't know which one that was, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I've asked for three, I'm just waiting for a third. I mean, I can go ahead with the, with the board wishes at this time.
Are you waiting for a call from a third or are you just waiting for a third? Do you know somebody that's calling or are you just waiting in general?
I'm, I'm waiting for a proposal.
From somebody specific?
Say it out.
So you know someone's giving you information?
Someone's, someone's posted.
So you, all right, so if you know somebody, if it was just you're hoping to get a third, then.
I'm anticipating it.
Is it a excited anticipation?
The quote that, that you referred to, Harold, was the one from Carpet Patrol. And he was pretty, pretty thorough.
I, I forget how much.
Over the two, pardon me.
How much was that?
$919.
How much was the other one? It was more.
Over $1,018.
I mean, I, I don't know anybody else thinks, but I, I think we want to make a, if we want to go forward, get carpet cleaned, just make a, a motion that we can spend up to $1,000 on cleaning the carpet. And then it, it can get dumped because it really looks terrible.
I, I would recommend the board approve the Carpet Patrol.
But you, you can still get your third bid, but if it comes in more than $1,000, you know, you know who to do.
Yeah, okay.
Can I do a conditional, do this Carpet Patrol for $919.18?
I, I, you know, I'll, I'll give the maximum $1,000. So I make the motion, make, we spend a maximum $1,000, he can get his third bid and he can pick the one day is the obvious scenario. Best person for the job.
Do you want to do a deadline if he doesn't get a third bid by?
Well, I'm hoping that we make the motion today that he doesn't wait till the next meeting.
No, it'll be by the end of the week.
Okay.
Do you want to add that motion?
I read the motion.
About putting it in the week?
Oh, I'm giving him two weeks.
July 1st?
July 1st, okay.
So we have a motion for $1,000, no more than $1,000.
I'll sign any motion.
All right, roll call Mr. Steve.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Bitler.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
All right, yes.
That is the original carpet that came with the building and we bought it and it really does look pretty rough.
Well, some of that we, we had flipped it, but yeah, if we can clean it, it'll be a lot better.
All right, so anything for old business, Rich?
No, you got to get.
He said, he said there was nothing new in this business.
There's not?
No.
What were we doing down, down the park the other day?
Oh, I was going to save that for the Parker and Rec. Yes, there, there was a, a meeting at the Parker and Rec with Supervisor Steve and myself and representatives from the company that we talked about previously. They gave, it was a very thorough review and I'm still waiting for the report, haven't received it yet.
Yeah, just an overview, they, they made, they made some observations. And, you know, one of the observations they made is, you know, why do we have the area along the road fenced off? It's not very inviting for a park. They made the observation that we have some trees that died and we have a lot of barren space there. We should have some trees to provide shade and opportunity for picnic tables. They did not make the Jersey barriers there, although I know that they serve a purpose, but we could come up with something else to replace them. They thought the job dummies sitting in the parking lot were terrible. They thought that we should have a pathway going from the parking lot to the recreation areas where the kids play, et cetera, et cetera. So even if, you know, if somebody in a wheelchair wanted to watch a ballgame, there's hardly any way for you to get there. And, you know, my thought, first thoughts was, you know, we have paving jobs that occasionally run over. You just want to pave strip up through there, you know, prepare it. And then run it as you have overruns until you get to the ball field. And then, you know, extend it out further as time goes on. They, they liked our pavilion, they thought it was very, you know, really nice, but everything needs to be painted and picked up. And we also have another court down there. I think at one time it was for volleyball, there was a volleyball court there. And they actually recommended that we do pickleball. Yeah, so, you know, which is very popular right now. And then they're going to come up with some other ideas and stuff to help improve. But in order for us to qualify, we, he was supposed to call us, but a guy named from DCEP to get out there and give them the hit list so that we're eligible for, you know, greater funding.
Yeah, I had brought that funding material home from the Simba Letters Convention also. And the way it read to me, we need to come up with a master plan.
That's what this organization hopefully will help us.
You need to send your master plan.
Yes.
One of the things they were, as Harold mentioned, one of the things they were talking about is trying to move some of the amenities of the park forward from the pavilion because it takes, you know, all the kid stuff are way in the back.
Yes.
And we have some open space, we're clearing some of those trees out. And the reason for the fencing, when I discuss with them later, is primarily for security of children and, and young people running around, you know, playing, playing in the parks. Nobody runs out into the 724 or stroll the road. So that, I think that was the fencing idea that they didn't appreciate until that was explained to them. But we're trying to, you know, move things forward towards the parking area. So, you know, the young mothers and the children and strollers don't have to trek all the way back to the pavilion.
I appreciate the comments on trees. There has been no trees planted there since the playground was open. Those sycamore trees are put in there and I'm just sorry and nothing's.
Yeah, they're big trees.
They're big trees now, we've had several that have died and been removed and there's been no replacements and no effort to replace them. And it's unfortunate because I did know at one time we had a development come through here where they had to clear a number of trees and the way our ordinance read, they couldn't put the number of trees back on what they had left. And we were looking for places to have trees planted. So we missed an opportunity to get free trees, unfortunate, is what we're leading to because we did not have a master plan showing that. So I mean, I don't know if it's out of place at this point in time, but I'm wondering if we should have a motion to develop you to have dirt and that's in, develop that master plan.
I think that's a very good point, Galen. I, I would like to see their initial proposal and then come back to the board.
Well, that's fine with me, I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Get things going in the right direction.
And as Harold mentioned, that will facilitate the township's position in filing for grants.
Yeah, that's.
You need that.
Sure.
I mean, I'm going to have it.
Sure, and recreation, there's more grants out there for recreation than anything else. From what I've seen, it's just amazing amount of stuff you can get under the recreational heading.
Yes.
One of the other things.
Recreation and recycling. Those are the two buzzwords, that's recycling, that's how I heard that, that's where that letter were by. There was a recycling grant.
One of the other things he did mention is, is for the size or the population of our township, we're well undersized for recreation. Yes.
We're, population wise, we're well, well in line for recycling, mandatory recycling. The only thing it's saving us is the numbers of square miles of area that we have.
Anything else, Rich, for Parker and Rec?
No, sir.
Anything for old business?
No, sir.
Any, need for executive session?
Yeah, let's do a, hopefully, short executive session.
All right, that will go to executive session to discuss, um, legal personnel issues at 8:00. I have a reading. Yes, yes.
I wish I would have.
I think it's pretty commercial, you know, from Chuck and Ken.
She was open. It was six more happy.
My partner said switch. You fall a while and left the voicemail, I'll get it. Maybe. So you're telling me that there's still a chance.
That was my impression, I tried to keep it low. Down to Virginia.
Some of them are common.
So she was living there. They now, they're going to X City and they're going to the hospital and then they show up to Milton Center and it's over the plane.
I said, I'm a lot of, but, but, um, not, not all. But I'm not a, I'm not a. Well, I, really, it's for now. Pretty good.
It's, it's. I never hear, he's not actually checking out. That relation airplane that crashed, he was on that. And then he showed up in New York and he had cancer and he was flying there, so it's been.
I got out of my meeting last, put myself involved in the general area. So I'm trying to make this work. So today they were playing down.
Right.
Well, he fits all these. And they're always the next to watch.
Yeah, that's great. We have a good time tonight.
Basically, we're. That's what we.
That's the thing, you go for a weekend, you still don't go to the weekend.
When they talk about the parks, I think nobody, my, coming to this point. You know, it's a twenty minute. Yeah, that's what, because it, you know, they see the times that they. Yeah, that's what does it, you know, they see the times that they can replace, but you can see that's.
The game be over by now, you know, and you're only in the fourth inning. Like, no, guys, you gotta ride that. I run a. It's been interesting to watch that we need.
We're close.
Yeah. Going to this event, I do.
When you gonna, you and I should have come up with some kind of a timeline.
Yes, yep. And I don't.
Man, when I'm thinking. We can each. We can each. But really separately, we don't have to share in the same room to do it.
No, I'd like. Yes, you too.
Or you do it. We can exchange.
Well, I will send you. What I have so far. Spent exactly three minutes at my notice. I started my, s- sending the payment fifty dollars to the inspection, I I just kinda started. That's why, that's why I. And 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 this is, and the other guy, this is the meeting door.
Well, I've started with the other ordinances for the for other definitions.
Yeah.
And really, we can define any way we want, but we need to make sure that we differentiate the other from this. Definition, they kinda like that.
Yeah, and that's my question is, how much of the old stuff do we wanna beat?
I think we, I don't see any reason why, you know, like, um, first, um, I think that's what we're talking about. Boarding out, I don't think, doors.
I just.
So boarding out is around, right? A little more of them. So I don't think we can get rid of that. But you might, we definitely have to distinguish who.
I can't. Right.
Um, the vending records, I think that would, um, and should we distinguish that?
Oh, yeah. She's still.
The other ones, I, you know, I think, I think it's, uh, part of the, I don't. I decided, oh, I need her performance.
I'll be honest with you, I mean, first, this issue. I didn't look into, or did House? You know what I mean, I I didn't even know. There's things in that, like you said, that's what I did, I went and I started, you know, troll flying. Things that come out or, you know?
Well, in the in the old days, when Rich and I did not have say here. You know, those ordinances were about that thing.
Those were the days.
Yeah. It was pretty simple and straightforward and, you know, but.
How many you look at? Executive session.
And and anybody, anybody.
The one session that come in here.
And the other.
We also filed.
Everything would. On. And it had nothing to do with, with our ordinance.
This, this, this plan had.
The whole area of laws.
They did, they did absolutely nothing, but they did everything to shout that.
The old Commonwealth Court, the old.
When they had the, they had the.
Seventies and eighties. In the.
This is the township manager. Testify, she testified that it was executive session.
Commonwealth Court now.
That they brought it, they did zoning change.
People come in and think they can. Because a lot of it happened, which I don't question, I'd be about. And by change, don't make laws executive, but.
So we can find out.
That's wrong.
That's how it happened. Directors, they're selling properties.
Now you have.
What do you want with his property and? Do you think? And Comer had said. Anything's caused you to create this? Alarm or desire with the exchange. These regional states, and so there's, they're claiming that there was, it's actually three pieces.
What I don't like.
Even though the person.
The problem with regional.
Pieces were bought.
That that we're gonna have.
Thing after.
Long piece gonna happen.
It's only to certain degree. Cause, cause what happened is.
Usually, when we're allowed, when you go for the plan, they build.
So many change.
And then, if you inspect and you don't like the air. I'd rather that than what we're gonna do.
And they, and they, and they'll charge with the.
Okay, they said they could go, oh, now they wanna bond the. Well.
That's how we.
It's good that we bonded, because we didn't have money. In the first.
Structural, but.
So that part is good, but now you guys. It's just, oh, there's something else working. Something else is going. That, that.
And on the other end, we're gonna have this thing, and you should.
Structurally constructed.
Talking about, talking about access.
Simple example, which, which.
Warehouse.
Untrue.
How you gonna get to a major road?
If.
Instead of, we can go down, we can go down seven twenty-four and get on. That, or if you go down and greenhouse. Get and get on that. Or in a pinch, we can go down to Lancaster Avenue.
You know.
And everybody started rolling. Lancaster, Lancaster Avenue, Route ten, Madison two.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, and with the fire department, they have the firehouse.
Zero, making sure that it it is inspected.
The other thing.
Amage. Before the rest of.
Build Taj Mahal.
If I, if if somebody had come to me and said, you're paid for a day, what was gonna do in this case? I'd make a post the whole two, not two million. And then at the next meeting.
They better just.
After you inspect it. Draw it in.
Cause that's what Comer did.
That's not where you're at.
I'll let you, I'll let you know if they.
And then once. And you'll see in my developer, I mean, there's every plant in the last renovation.
Ages to.
Oh, mine.
How's your wife's approved?
Second year ago.
She's gotta go back here for, uh.
But we can.
July.
That's more of a question, they, right now, she goes back. I don't know whether it's in her, say, last renovation in twenty sixteen. And then expected now.
The other day I get up, I got no water.
As built in my. As of.
Now, two hundred eighty.
Twenty twenty-three.
Mine's only down a hundred fifty-five. My. The water table is. Long hill, you know, I'm on that, pretty good sized hill.
Yeah.
Oh. It seems as though they are now able to, you guys okay, secure a uh, renew highway occupancy permit that you got to the state highway, that's why they're. So are we gonna be on YouTube now?
What was Bitler saying about?
We don't do that. Just happy to be.
Right, that's right, yeah.
That's right.
I mean.
I'm not sure.
Before.
I believe we said that the meeting was now being.
YouTube. All right. What I thought he said. But I haven't, why do I know? Well, yeah, I don't, I don't get on YouTube.
Is that?
The signs right there.
That is being resolved as, as we talk, so, so. I'm, I'm sort of glad I'm top of the old manager. It's needed and I should regulate this. Uh, the pond's nonpermitted. Uh, homeowner. Well, do the best we can. I know the pond. I did the same. And, and their argument is. Everyone is. I fought one of them. Left, they think. Problem. They have. At least my wife has got a good report, and she's gonna. They are allowed. They're gonna try to reconnect the colon to one July. Oh, that's good. I hope that goes. Um. She thinks she's been disconnected. Nobody's really. That's hard.
Yeah.
Far from here, that I think contributes a lot. The developer. Marcus said he. Yeah, I'm not sure what Tim. Was money, money started. And they have a re, I mean, environmental. I, I love that he said YouTube, but I don't know what setting. Record of. But we did have people in the meeting tonight. Determine. No. Uh, what's. I thought I heard on the background on the beginning of this. Okay. I don't think. Okay, that's the avenue that they are going. Who's the guy that was here? I don't know where they are in that process. That's, uh, Tim's son. Homeowner and developer. Tim Bitler's son. Oh, oh, oh. So they're talking, they're, yes, yes.
Well, those two.
Are not connected. Yeah. That's the way that I. So.
So take one someone close, that one have to. Permanent.
Yeah, they have something. Yeah. All right. I'm gonna hang around to see what they change in executive session. I did, I left a roomay and I found out that they put back in the change of, uh, zoning, not the zoning, but the. And I'm not, uh, there, there's, you know, some of that was put together by, you know, I, I. And then, and then ended with the regular session and made it, when it looks like a session, it came back, yes. They, they changed it, uh, without. Some. Well, she doesn't like it. No, I, so. My biggest worry was. When this was going on and it was bad, and I believe that there was in time and the shit was bad, I was there. I would go out there and I would send the conservation district pictures. And like you should. And the district will come out and say there's no. You know. Why you changing these? Harold had a few changes. But he was. To look into. Yes. I remember, I remember being. He took on the responsibility last month to look into uh, the, um.
Yep.
Oh, last meeting.
It, it's a.
Look into if the burning van gave us additional. And I don't. Capability of buying trucks that have lower cost. And I don't think he said anything about that. Remember? Yeah. So. And what. Senate, that is, that you gets changed to look into that. But he listens to. He brings it one way, but he didn't say things. That, that were stated by D E T reps that I was just. Oh, my. Uh, one statement was, they have an N P S permit, they have a license to pull. Said you had a kidney, I've never heard anybody say that. And, um, after a half an hour of. Hey, what do you think? Spirited discussion.
Can't get paid at next home.
It doesn't pay and fine you ten thousand dollars and you ten thousand dollars. Back out to arrest. That's what he did. He was, he was very. I said, I don't care what these guys. I've seen dirt run off your property into, into my water and I'm not happy. Mercy just sent me a text, are you coming home soon? Helps. Grease the wheels a little bit for, for some. Yeah, sometimes. Leave at nine. Come heller, high water.
And it really depends on who you do.
Yeah. There was, there was a German, uh, it is, an engineer in, in the waterways department, his name's Ed Music, he's been promoted. Recently, the guy that took his place and was reviewing the culverts that, that were permitting for routes in township and others is absolutely overloomed his requirements. You know, we're, we're doing things that we never had. You know, it's, it's a young kid in college. Oh. I know. But that's, that's where we're at. Nothing's, nothing's getting easier. But then you go out there and you, you know, know your water running everywhere and that's okay. Sounds good. You got my hot dog, will you? So no, I didn't, I didn't know what you were thinking with, you know, that moving forward.
I think we can deal with it, but.
Jim, what you up to, Jim?
I wish we weren't having a parcel like her going to. And we're allowed easier to say, here's the agreement, here's the plan, here's the money. So as long as you're comfortable with the inspections and that the inspections aren't gonna need to be re-inspected.
They. The contractor has been. Fourth rate, that, you, you know, we, we never had an issue with that.
Not a plus, but.
You know, we could, we, we got lucky, it could have been anybody else. So. Yeah, that's just over my thoughts thus far, and that's, that's that section six twelve that I think we need to go through. And then I just attach.
I think just make that section four one, you know, maybe we'll leave that one for the bed and breakfast.
And that may be, yeah. So. Track them working. Not on wood, we've had no issues with that. That's good. I think, uh, my neighbor Mark Hoyt bought the same one. Oh, yeah? Yeah. He has a little one like that. Oh. What do you? A John. A ten twenty-five? Twenty thirty-eight? Oh, okay. You got a bigger one. Back home. It's not, it's not the world's greatest on the hills. No. Did, did, did you see when they were taking down Lynn's trees? Yes. Wow. He had quite a pile. I think that one, that one truck has gotta be almost forty inches of fat. Maybe more. You know, he has, um, he has graduated to craning all of those trees all over the place and. Oh, yeah. You know? When we first started using them, it was a lot different. Well, that, that used to be a grove up in there, I think, years and years ago, where it grew up. But Lynn had some hellish big pokers taken down, it must have been eighty, ninety foot. Yeah. Yeah. You see the size crane they grew in for that? Holy L. Lefted them right over the house. Yeah. I forget, who's this solicitor now of the, uh, zoning hearing? Is that? Who, who replaced you on the zoning hearing?
Of some young fellow from Kozlov's.
Oh, okay.
Oh, Colin McFarlane with it.
No, no. Rich, do you want me to take all these, or should I just take one set to check so you can have these here? Are they all signed? They had, the applicant has signed all of these. They just take one, I'll take the rest. I will send you a letter, um. Now essentially stating that they're adequate for municipal signature. Okay. Do they, do they look close with their, uh, the greens?
I, I don't. I didn't hear. You have. You have, you mean they're rich or you have any comment from the developer?
No.
And all, and then all of the rest. And I'm not expecting any problem with P and C, as long as we're not.
Where's Gary lounging around lately?
I don't know where, they're camping somewhere right now. Don't know exactly where. Um. Yeah, I couldn't, I'd have to look at his schedule.
They really, they're gonna have that. Six lanes of ninety five open in less than two weeks.
It's open this weekend.
Yeah, the weekend.
Yeah.
It's. Two each and I'm.
Yeah, just.
Our favorite Sunday.
Six, six lanes.
It's nine, nine days after fire and they, they were on TV tonight at six saying it will be open this weekend, either Saturday or Sunday.
That's amazing.
What was the material they used, it was some.
Recycled glass.
It's.
Recycled glass.
Recycled glass, they filled that whole thing in with that.
It looks like rocks, but it's.
Yeah.
It's a lighter rock.
Yeah. And apparently it's probably gonna be easy to remove.
Yeah, well, it doesn't, because it's clean, it's in combat. You know, it.
That company, I never heard of that company, is it something new that they're doing?
I don't know. It must be out there for a while for the engineer.
Well, yeah, he had to come up with, I mean, that, that company had to come up with, oh, close to thousands, millions of that stuff.
Yeah, they, I had, I had a state engineer that I deal with that was down there, he said, he's never seen anything like it. The amount of people and everybody working together and moving.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and the, and the amount of engineers that were down there, he said he was like one of thirty.
Yeah.
That was down there and they all had their own thing and they all had their own direction. And for the state to get that much together at one time.
Well, and it's all being funded through the Fed.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it, it's gonna, what is it, twenty five million just to get it, uh, this way. They're not, they're not sure what the long terms are gonna be.
We got plenty of money. They just prick more, a hundred dollar bills, it's all good.
I thought that was, that was amazing. I looked at the, they had it up on YouTube, didn't they?
Yeah.
I looked at it a couple times and they had trucks rolling in at all hours to the night.
They said twenty four seven, they're working.
Yeah. It's amazing what can get done when it has to get done.
Yeah.
Look, I, I, I'm sure that like in major contracts, they have clauses in, if you beat the deadline by so much, you get so much of the. As a bonus.
I don't even think there's a contract on that. That's time and material they're pushing.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there was no bid process, I don't think.
Yeah, no, that was.
No. The bid process alone would have slowed it down.
Well, that takes about a year.
Yeah. Yeah. But, yeah, I never, I, I'd never heard of that material being used before.
No, it's.
I know in California, when they had that big shake years ago, they use some experimental, uh, cement. But you use less water and you compact it in place.
Yeah.
You roll it in, in place to get the water out in a cured fashion. And that's still working out there.
They, they said they use conveyors to put the stuff in.
They did, yeah.
You know, it wasn't like they were using a machine to pick and dump it.
Yeah.
They were using, uh, the pickup conveyors, you know, that, you see them when they do snow and stuff where.
Yeah.
Where milling, they pick it up and it.
Yeah.
That's what they were using. Or whatever.
Two weeks, that's amazing.
And we'll see how it holds up to the, the vibration and the traffic.
Yeah.
Queenstone, that's packed, as long as it's like, the structure on the side holds it for blowing down.
They were gonna put something, uh, fifteen inch shoes or basketball over. Yeah, some days, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, they have, they had the, the shield. Agents, uh.
They, they still here.
It's.
I believe I was talking about.
Rocks.
Short term rentals.
And then they were selling them to the other.
We got one in stone now.
In between layers, to, to strengthen them, to strengthen on it. And. You know, we need to see. After about three weeks, the trucks finally wanted to see what else. I'll keep my head out. Standard quarter for June, even though it's like this. In regular session at eight fifty two, um, we need to discuss the personal issue unrelated to that, Kellen, when you're making a motion for. I'll say another agenda, I think. And we intend the agenda to, uh, include a motion to, uh. Pull the top. Just to the top, it's their defensive playground to get herbicide around Spencer Playground, uh, down in the labor group, perhaps a pool, I mean, stuff will. Well, chain link fence. So that's a motion to add that to the agenda, we have a. Okay. All in favor? All right, so Kellen, what's your thoughts on? Make a motion, we direct the manager to hire a firm to apply herbicide.
We need something.
What do you mean, what do you like? Herbicide around the fence at the playground. If you want to cost. And control the vines growing up and, and prevent future growth. That will probably need a contact herbicide to kill it off there and then a pretty emerging herbicide to stop loose stuff from growing, coming up. Stuff we did before, I think we used early, if I'm not mistaken, Tom.
Yeah, well, we had the county, uh, labor force, remember?
Yeah.
Do that years ago.
Yeah.
And got, and most of them got poisoned. You made me, do we demotion to amend the agenda?
I did. So, no. What's the motion? On the motion, he wants to do the weed killer stuff, but we would have to make a motion to. I don't see. Who wants to do the weed stuff? I, all right. Well, he made a motion, but we need to have a cost. Man, how much is it gonna cost for somebody? Or put a cap of a thousand dollars or something like that, just to be safe.
Are we talking about just the fence along Gibraltar Road?
No, the fence around the playground. Since that's next to my property, obviously. How's that?
The whole, the whole fence?
Yeah, and before, previously, I don't know if it come up again, there was poison ivy on your side of the fence at one time, Tim, and a bunch of it. And we, they took care of it when it was done then, I don't know if it was Erlich's or whether it was Steve Marino that did it at that time, but I remember it being trimmed up in that way.
Can't we just buy the stuff and spray it in-house?
Pardon?
Can't we just buy the weed killer and spray it ourselves?
We lost our pesticide applicator. He went, he's not working for, for Breckham.
Conor.
Conor, I'm sorry, Conor is correct, that's right. If we had somebody that had a, had the license, sure, we could do it in-house.
It'd be cheaper.
Can we just make, he made a motion just to, to do what Richard. Lets us know, potentially, I don't, I don't know why, but he could cut the thousand bucks. That's a lot. I doubt it'll cost, but, you know, I don't know. Well, now if you see five hundred and then let us know if somebody. Yeah, all right, let's go to it, but without it. Is that your motion? Yeah, that'd be my motion. All right, I'll second that. I'll call Mr. Steve. Yes. Mr. Brown. Yes. Mr. Bitler.
Oh, stay in there.
Mr. Rose. Yes. And I'll be there. I'd be used to try and cut labor down because it's gonna be a lot cheaper to spray that than sit there and pick all that honeysuckle off that chain link fence. That's a, I've done that, that's a. Nope, nobody's fair, nobody's gonna pick the honeysuckle off. Nobody's gonna pick it off.
You wanna make a motion to adjourn at eight fifty six?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
I, I.
Okay.
Good night, everyone. I know what, all the ones I had signed.
Yeah.
See. I had a plan. On these here and wood. I'll let you down.
Some are make. Credit cards.
All right.
That has some wood. And there's huge.
I don't know, yes, I have it in more. It is. I did.
I gave it to you.
I probably. What's that? Yeah. Yeah.
I understand.
Oh, you want that to work?
Yeah.
It's not recorded, but I'm.
Cause it's.
We're.[1713.81]